Time being seven oh three, I call to order the Franklin School Committee meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel nine, Verizon Channel twenty-nine, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. And at the conclusion of our meeting, we will be adjourned into executive session and will not be returning to open meeting. So, uh, when I kick things off, I have a little something special with our pledge students today. So now, um, over the years, I know folks have kind of come to me, I'm sure others as well, and often kind of said, um, you know, both, both things, you know, for, for the time and for the hours, like the sacrifice that kind of takes to be up here in these volunteer roles. But what often kind of goes unnoticed sometimes is the sacrifices that the rest of our families are making, our spouses, the grandparents, friends, neighbors, to really kind of make this all happen every other Tuesday. And so, uh, and especially it's our kiddos as well, who I know sometimes they miss bedtime stories, um, you know, this is like football games, recitals, that we're not there for because we're here, and that we really appreciate all of that that you give to us as well. Uh, and so, uh, because of that, we have a couple of really special pledge students tonight. I'll kick things off with my colleague, L. Charles.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so in the audience tonight, I have both my boys, Owen Charles, who is a freshman at Franklin High School, um, and then also, uh, my other son, Christopher Charles, who is a middle schooler at Franklin Middle School.
And then I have my three children, Daniel and Hannah Griffith, who are both fifth graders at Lincoln Elementary, and Mark Griffith, who is practicing for kindergarten.
You guys want to kind of up on up to, uh, to the mic and can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the principle with liberty and justice
Wonderful job. Thank you all so much. And now, as is customary, we'll pause for a moment of silence. If you guys want to take off, feel free to. All right, uh, review of agenda, agenda located, everybody?
So, uh, just one quick question about the agenda.
Yep.
So I know we have two items for discussion action. With this being the last of the school committee, the policy one, and it will have second read next meeting, will we have to reduce second read, or first read again, since it'll be a new committee at that point?
Uh, procedurally, you wouldn't have to have a second read for a new committee, it would be a second read publicly for the school committee, so it can proceed as, as it's paced.
Okay, cool. And then regarding the superintendent goals, um, do we want the next school committee to approve this, or are we okay with us approving it if there's anything that they may see differently? Thoughts on that?
Do you, you, I can speak to you, you can sit.
Go right, we had, yeah, we, uh, this, we had this discussion kind of on Friday, but yeah, Superintendent Gueye, if you want to kind of give your, um...
Sure. So we did discuss the goals, if you notice, the goals align directly to the four goals of the, the district improvement plan. The thought was either wait for the new school committee to improve, uh, to approve those goals, or to put the goals forward as they're stated, as they re-tie directly to the work currently in place over those four areas for district improvement. The, the thought is the timing of it being October, but approving those in November, we have an organizational meeting, um, we wouldn't put it on that agenda, so it would kick it out into December, so it was more of timing, but certainly can understand the question and would want to just be, uh, transparent about that. The goal was to say, uh, because of how they're aligned this year specifically, and I know we had exchanged some emails on just about the goals themselves, um, and I'm, I have, if given the opportunity tonight, I'll explain how they connect to the work that was already approved within the district improvement plans and the school improvement plans, um, but I really tried to tie it directly to that. So, that was the, the, the thought behind doing that now, was just that this is the committee that has kind of seen that work and approved the district goals, and they're in turn, as a segment of the school year, uh, in the first quarter of school, is to try to get some of the goal setting done so that we can move forward in a way that moves us forward with a direction.
Okay. Um, can I just ask maybe, is it for the next committee, um, could we have a, like a review, I know it's the organizational meeting, but maybe that first meeting is a review of the goals that were previously agreed upon?
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Perfect. Then, uh, payment of bills taken care of, payroll Vice Chair McNeil, payroll's in order. All right, FHS student rows.
Hi, my name is Callie Joyce, I'm the president of the class of twenty twenty-seven.
Hey, my name is Siobhan Dev, and I'm the vice president of the class of twenty twenty-seven.
Um, we're going to be doing an overview of like what each class has been doing recently and what they have, like what events they have coming up. So, starting off with the seniors, their senior banquet is scheduled for April tenth, twenty twenty-six, and senior portraits are due today.
Now, the juniors are doing a lot of fundraising for their upcoming prom at Gillette Stadium. So, November twenty-sixth is our fundraiser with the shed, in order to do a fifty-fifty fundraiser that'll raise that money. For the sophomores, they have sophomore banquet on March thirteenth of next year.
And then the freshman class is doing a raffle for a cauldron of candy in order for their freshman banquet and other, like, events that they have. Picture day was today and tomorrow, and there will be parent teacher conferences in person on November twelfth, and online on November thirteenth.
Now, as for the winter stuff, AP exams are starting to open up for payment, and students are getting ready to do those, as well as winter sports registration as fall sports, fall sports start coming to an end.
And for homecoming, we had on Saturday, the theme was Festival of Lights, and the dance was very fun. The senior flow was the Boston Tea Party, the junior flow was Star Wars, the sophomore flow was Scooby Doo, and then the freshman flow was Pirates of the Caribbean.
Fantastic, thank you all very much. Open for questions, comments from the committee?
No questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Wish I had my prom at Gillette Stadium. That's pretty cool. Why weren't we on that when I was, when I was here, come on?
I don't think Gillette Stadium was open.
No, it wasn't. I actually think for Mr. McNeil, it might have been open. It might have been open for Mr. McNeil.
It's your last meeting, Dan, I couldn't read that.
Two thousand and one, it opened, I think.
That's awesome, thank you guys for our great updates. Thank you.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both very much.
Have a great day.
I think Tom Verity was the quarterback when Mr. McNeil graduated.
All right, and superintendents report.
Okay, we have three announcements to share with you this evening. So the first is Tuesday, November fourth is a half day for students, teams across the district will focus on strengthening school communities and team collaboration, town elections will be held in the FHS gymnasium on that day, and students and families will receive communication from the school principal regarding parking, uh, on, on that day for, for voting and also for our staff for parking. Uh, next, as you already heard, Franklin Public Schools will be hosting their conferences on Wednesday, November twelfth, and Thursday, November thirteenth, and conferences provide an opportunity for families and teachers to connect about student progress. Families can expect to hear from school communities directly from their specific schools with additional details. Uh, finally, a moment of appreciation. This evening, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Aaron Gallagher and Dave McNeil for their dedicated years, years of service. Aaron has served, uh, the two-year full term, and Dave has served in four years of the two terms, and we are grateful, uh, on behalf of the community, on behalf of the staff, we're grateful for your, not only your volunteerism, but your leadership, and, uh, the work that you've put in, uh, it's tireless, it's, it's thankless, it's also payless, um, so the fact that you, uh, you, you volunteer your time for this, I thought, I would just share that, you know, your steady and thoughtful leadership, uh, among your colleagues and this team have really helped guide Franklin Public Schools, which has turned, which has had some really challenging years. Uh, you've served during a time of significant challenge, and it's not gone unnoticed, and your support of educators and students and families has strengthened our school community. So you've left an indelible impact on, on all of the, uh, areas where you've weighed in, made decisions, and led and supported, and we're certainly appreciate, appreciate all of it. Finally, I would just say I'm deeply grateful for, um, just your commitment to Franklin Public Schools and the mission of our schools, and the work that you've done on behalf of our community. So, thank you very much for all that you've done. Um, as a small token of our appreciation, you, there are some cards at your desk, um, for you, but also we have, um, some plants that have, uh, they're cactus plants, there's no symbol, symbolism there, they're just meant to be a flowering cactus plant, very hardy, and live through, have lived through some pretty rugged conditions, I thought that emulated your experience on school committee, and, um, you'll notice, uh, that some beautiful artwork was put on the, the vases themselves, um, that included Franklin Public Schools, and I want to give credit to Ms. Jenny Callahan for her artistic work to help us with that. So, we hope that that is just a small reminder of your work, hopefully it's a fond memory when you look at that cactus plant, and, um, we just appreciate everything you did, so thank you very much.
Any committee members?
Thank you everyone for the subcommittee, thank you.
I just said I object. Thanks.
So, um, I will say, uh, first I just have a couple of comments myself and Aaron. Folks often use the phrase moving the goalposts as a criticism. Um, when I first met you, I think over about two years ago at a farmer's market, uh, you had a, a tent, uh, for the children's museum, and talking about the pop-up events that, uh, you were doing, and how they were going to lead to a full-fledged children's museum brick and mortar, uh, within about a year and a half, two years. And, uh, at the time, I, I thought the timeline might not be realistic, uh, because I thought I knew where the goalposts of possibility were. Uh, but with every update, every milestone, every challenge overcame, I watched you move those goalposts, and you showed me that impossible isn't fixed, it's just waiting for someone determined enough to push it out a little bit further. And that same spirit showed up again with the new schools opened, uh, you helped build culture and community from the ground up, you made brand-new buildings, classrooms feel like homes, and you moved the goalposts again and again, and in doing so, remind me, uh, that what is impossible is often just a starting line. So I thank you so much for, for dreaming big, for letting me, uh, kind of see that and come along with it, and for all the amazing work that you've done for, for this entire town. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, I, um, am not the crier in our co-founder relationship between me and Meg Hagan, but if she's online, she'll be crying for me. It's very sweet, thank you.
And, Mr. McNeil, it's been a long time coming, but tonight we say goodbye to someone who left an indelible mark on this district. From your tireless work with the Franklin Education Foundation, to our four years serving on the school committee, you've been an unwavering advocate for education. Over the past four years, you've chaired the Budget Subcommittee with dedication and skill, guiding us through one financial challenge after another. Even during the back-to-back cruel summers following the failed override votes, you led with integrity, focus, and a steadfast commitment to the district's mission. Now, I have this thing where I get older, but just never wiser, and yet I've learned so much from you. You have a wonderful way of connecting with folks, seeing through the noise, and knowing how best to navigate rough waters. The world moves on, but one thing's for sure, this district won't be the same without you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those kind words, and for all, now, for all this, it's really been, uh, it's been an honor serving these past four years, um, you know, serving, giving back to my hometown, being able to move back here and get involved, I've, um, learned so much, and we've definitely done a lot over four years, you know, from the end of COVID to overrides, to hiring Lucas, to redistricting, um, it's, it's been a lot, and it's been an honor, um, to be a part of that. And, uh, yeah, I'd like to thank the community for, you know, putting their trust in me and granting this opportunity, thank for all my, um, fellow, fellow public servants in government here, and, uh, it's been an honor too to, you know, serve as Vice Chair these past two years, and thank you, Dave, for, um, your leadership, um, over these past two years. Um, you know, two years ago, when it was just, just the three of us, we're, we're the only ones returning, um, and, uh, yeah, and of the three of, I mean, all three of us, we were, we had only just finished up our very first term here, and, uh, you know, like, it was pretty intimidating, not knowing where the, where the leadership was going to be going, and, you know, wanting to figure out who was going to throw their hat in their ring, um, you know, in those conversations, I mean, in that, now, when having those discussions, uh, you expressed interest in that, but first and foremost, you put the district forward in, before any personal ambition, or self-interest, or ego, you didn't want to have it be a contentious fight over leadership, you said you wanted to just have, have the best person be in there and not try to put yourself forward, and not try to have there be a fight over it, and because of that, because you're that type of person to put the best interest of the community, and the best interest of this committee, before, for yourself, I know that you were the best person, and will continue to be the best person, I'm sure, um, going forward to leave this, so, thank you for all that you've done, um, in service of this district and this community, and, um, yeah, and, yeah, it really has been an honor, thank you.
Thank you both very much. Now, we actually have a meeting to get to. So, um, discussion action items, uh, policy first read.
Okay.
Did we not ask questions on the superintendent's report?
Oh, absolutely, uh, so, yes.
So sorry. Um, thank you for this, uh, but also I was wondering if it's okay if I ask something very slightly off-topic from your report, but important nonetheless. Um, I've been feeling heartbroken this week that people in our community may not have SNAP benefits starting in November, and I was wondering if you could just share, um, with folks listening, the information about the weekend backpack program, should they need it for their family, um, and also whether principals in our schools might be able to send out information about that to families, should they need that come, uh, the start of the month?
I can start the conversation, I know Paula can chime in as well. So, the, the, the short answer is yes, uh, families can communicate if they have a need, um, and they're not already identified, and also, uh, I know Tina has put out, Tina Partley has put out, um, information about the status of the Boston Food Bank, and then, um, how it's impacting the Franklin food pantry. So that is a real need, I think there, uh, there's real concern, I know they've done direct donation from the community, but ultimately, the question on the weekend backpack program, um, I'll let Paula talk a little bit about the overview of it, you know, we can...
Yep. Um, any family who, um, would, um, benefit from food coming home on the weekends, um, from the food pantry, do you just have to contact either your school nurse, your school counselor, or one of the administrators? Um, it's completely anonymous, um, they do it very discreetly, um, and we, we help to start that up, you know, within a week. Um, usually they deliver, the students pick them up usually, or they're delivered to the student classroom on Fridays, so, um, but yeah, it's, it's confidential, and all they have to do is reach out, like I said, to the school nurse, the school counselor, or the administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you.
Then, uh, discussion action item, policy first read.
Okay, so you have a policy for your first read, I'm going to pass this along to Dr. Rogers in a second, but ultimately, just to provide a little bit of context, uh, the graduation requirements related to, um, Franklin High School, but also within the state, um, as you know, MCAS is no longer required as, um, the metric for the competency determination. So districts were charged with putting forth and reviewing policy to make sure that we are letting the state know, how are students graduating, what are the requirements for that to take place? And I'll let Dr. Rogers get into some of the detail, but ultimately, there's two pieces to that puzzle. It's requiring, like satisfying, the program studies as outlined, and the graduation requirements as outlined currently in our Franklin Public Schools, uh, Franklin High School handbook, which outlines that, but also, um, being clear about what does competency mean, so to demonstrate mastery, ultimately. So I think I'll kick it over to you to talk about those changes, we're in the midst of this, we've worked with our cohort of superintendents and assistant superintendents within the district to try to look at our policy, and, um, ultimately, we can walk through that now.
Okay. Okay. So, the first policy before you, IKF, graduation requirements, is the standard MASC policy, um, just speaks to, we don't have it currently in place in Franklin Public Schools, and where we're putting in place a competency determination that then references graduation requirements, we thought it was appropriate to add this as one of your school committee policies. So, it is taken straight from MASC policy again, and, um, ultimately points towards the school committee-approved Franklin High School program of studies and, um, student handbook, so you, as you know, approve those each year, and so if there's any, uh, changes made to graduation requirements, that would be involved in some discussion with you all for approval. So this policy really just points to those two, um, handbooks that you approve January timeframe, and then in August timeframe. Um, the second paragraph there just outlines for students who do, uh, participate in foreign exchange programs or things of that, just having some language there that would support, uh, building administration at Franklin High School, to redo a transcript review and be able to approve those types of credits towards graduation requirements for Franklin High School. Do you want to move to the next one, or take questions on this?
Go to the next one.
Go to the next one, okay. So the next policy before you, competency determination, is one of now the mandates that were required to put in place for every single public school in Massachusetts. So as Mr. Gueye shared, shared back in November, I think it was November fourth last year, there was a vote to repeal MCAS, so that does not repeal competency determination, it strictly repealed MCAS as the competency determination, and then, um, sitting within DESI's purview, was family and students' rights to go through an appeals process, should a student not meet that competency determination, and that now resides with the local schools. So this policy is working to outlining what our local competency determination is. So I'll, I'll talk through some of this, and then answer any questions that you might have. So ultimately, the mass regulations outlines that, first paragraph there, it says to earn competency determination, a student must meet two criteria. They must satisfactory complete coursework and show mastery. They have to do those two things in the, um, coursework outlined by DESI regulations, which is English nine, English ten, Algebra one, biology, a science, we at Franklin High School have historically always said biology, and now coming for the graduating class of twenty twenty-seven would be US history would be added, because the state was working to add civics, MCAS, and they're still kind of in process of that. Um, their competency determination regulations also outlines that, um, competency determination can also be looked at in world language and some other content areas, but for right now, this is what the current regulations from the Department of Ed outline. So, what we are noting is that one portion of satisfactory completing coursework, coursework means that a student receives a passing grade in the coursework outlined below, so you'll see those bulleted lines, English Language Arts, English nine and ten, that I mentioned, mathematics, which is Algebra one or geometry, science, and we list out all the possibilities there, where we just, um, at Franklin High, students took biology, students can satisfactorily complete coursework in either biology, physics, chemistry, or a technology or, or engineering, because that's the way the DESI guidelines outline. Um, the second piece to this is showing mastery, and so what we are, um, what we're sharing is, to show mastery, a student must successfully complete relevant coursework, certified by Franklin Public Schools, as reflect, reflecting the skills, competencies, and knowledge outlined in the Massachusetts Academic Standards and Curriculum Frameworks, and meeting district grading for proficiency. So in doing so, a student would show mastery by earning full credit in these specified courses as outlined in completing the relevant coursework within each of those courses. Okay, so those are like the two components to competency determination, satisfactory completing, and then showing mastery. I'm going to move to the second page, and then I'll answer questions. So, the next piece to this is, um, well, you'll see there, US one and US two are outlined there, so that is, would not be for this year's graduating class, but for moving forward in, in, starting in with our junior class, with class of twenty-seven, would be required to show competency in, in that academic area as well. So the additional considerations you see outlined there below, again, are kind of requirements that are put out there, but also best practice, because we would want students, um, we, we want to support all students in reaching competency determination. So, um, the first paragraph there outlines that, um, students with disabilities that have been placed out of district placement have equal opportunity, and that discussions happen during team meetings to determine what that competency determination may look like, that relevant coursework for those students to earn full credit, and those conversations we know happen as students enter high school, um, and continue through. Next is for our English Language Learners, that we, um, on a case-by-case basis, determine what appropriate courses are necessary for English Language Learners to, to, for English nine and English ten specifically, um, can be, can, to achieve competency. So we currently do this in our high school already, we have replacement courses for English nine and English ten, for students who qualify. Um, students, uh, we had to put provisions in, so if you imagine a student enters Franklin High School, um, after English nine, after Algebra one, after English ten, maybe they enter senior year, there has to be a process to review to determine, uh, competency determination. So this will prob, this will likely require us to ask for more information from the sending schools to understand their competency policy, um, but ultimately saying that it is a determin, a competency determination, um, can be, um, provided upon administrative review, which the high school, again, receives students, sophomore year, junior, senior year, and do transcript reviews to see if they meet our local graduation requirements, so this is just another layer of ensuring that they show mastery and that satisfactory completed coursework. So again, that's part of our, um, internal process already, but we would be adding language around competency. Um, the Department of Ed also shared that in limited situations, local school districts can use MCAS as a measure, but they have to be limited in scope. So you'll see outlined in that paragraph is where we have determined, um, if we're unable from transcript reviews, from records, um, pulling records from, um, sending communities, unable to determine competency, uh, based on those records, that we would look towards MCAS as a meeting or exceeding, um, score, to be able to, um, say that a student has met competency determination. Um, and then finally, we have to have, uh, an appeals process, which formerly the Department of Education has been the, um, kind of gatekeeper of an appeals process, uh, you have to give students an opportunity to show competency, even if it is after their twelfth grade year... 12th grade year. So students who maybe have graduated or have received a certificate of attainment in prior years have an opportunity to come back and go through an appeals process, a transcript review process, in which we could then determine yes or no that they need the competency determination to receive a diploma. So for all students and families, we'll have to offer that pathway. We do already have appeals process built into our student handbook, program of studies for graduation requirements, so we would be looking to mimic that process, but this would be the policy that would be in place for that. And then we just noted there, I think it's always important to be really clear in our policy, the last line there saying the principal's decision will be the final at the building level, just to ensure that it stays within that group of folks that are most closely tied and connected to the program and the coursework at the high school. Okay? And I would just say, I think I saw Heather McVay in the crowd. Heather's been working with me since, I don't know, Heather, are you here? I can see you. Since, I don't know, December of last year, I think we've been meeting on and off. So we've been, I've met regularly with a few folks from high school pretty consistently, folks from Student Services, just to make sure that everybody, you know, could see a pathway for all students that we're supporting students, and also giving our team the flexibility to determine the processes on the backend of this policy. So.
Thank you very much. All right, just to open the floor for discussion and questions, first, entertain a motion.
So I recommend moving the following policies to a second reading as discussed, IKF graduation requirements and IKFE competency determinations.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to move policies IKF graduation requirements and IKFE competency determinations to a second reading as discussed.
All right, second?
Second.
Questions and comments from the committee? Start down here.
Nothing.
So I've got two that I wanted to focus on. So one of them in IKF, just the way that things are laid out, looking at each one of the bullets and then subbullets for what could possibly satisfy each one of those requirements.
IKFE, I'm sorry, or IK?
Yes, IKFE, I apologize. Someone who's reading this quickly or might have some challenges with those hanging "or" that we have on each one of the lines, potentially having something at the bullet, so let's say in science, satisfying at least one of the following, because then it reads easily, it kind of follows in, but people know from that initial point exactly what is going to be required. It's not all four, first glance. It's very easy to assume that you're, you require four separate things for that one topic. I know, I believe we need to make a motion to actually amend this, but it's something that I don't know if anyone else in the committee would want to discuss. I know that's kind of the point here. And then the other side of things is for mastery. We do define mastery somewhat vaguely, so I don't know if we would be able to put in a more specific outcome, aside from grading for standards for proficiency. If there is a set letter grade that this district uses as proficient, we should use it, just to make sure that there's no question as to, you know, what exactly that's, what that is, or if there's any kind of variability there. If we have a set standard for the department, we should highlight it right there and say it. So I don't know if anyone else feels similar. I think, again, this is a discussion point.
So you're just saying, like, what we have in the handbook essentially transferred to this policy to just clarify?
It's enumerating specifically in this policy, so for that specific point, it would be stating what the standards are for proficiency, instead of just saying, as long as you've achieved proficiency. This is the student mastery paragraph, third from the top, and then the other one is just to highlight a change for wording for each one of the major bullets.
Yeah.
So.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So point of information, in this instance, would we need to then amend and vote on that amendment?
You would need to, you would need to take a vote to amend if you chose, but then we could make the modification for second read for the next reading. If you leave here with it formalized as part of this first read, which is the intent of the discussion, as long as you take a vote as a committee on the amendments and it passes by majority, we can move it forward to the next meeting with those, with those pieces. I would just add, so district grading standards is maybe not definitive enough. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And then, if it said high school grading standards or proficiency, the one thing I would think about, we haven't necessarily changed that passing rating in any circumstance, but if the high school, we just have to be mindful of, if a high school grading standards changed or were modified in any way, and if it was written and spelled out here, you'd have to make sure you go back and vote on this at the same time. That's just the procedure of it, where if it said, if it referenced the high school proficiency based on the high school grading standards, whatever those standards are in the handbook are what you could point to. So there's two ways to look at it, so.
And I could appreciate that clarity. I think, you know, what you're asking for is kind of additional flexibility versus, I think, specificity that could really benefit the students and the parents at this point. And if there is a change, understanding that, you know, essentially you'd come back for this specific line in order to change if there is a change in proficiency, but also, I think that would be helpful to highlight, you know, if there is a change, you know, up or down in the specific values that are required for proficiency, that would be very helpful for, I think, a broader discussion as well. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to amend policy IKFE to include the language as discussed, including specific values required for grading standards for proficiency, and highlighting for each one of the four major points that are requirements for competency, that one of the bullets beneath each one of those will be required in order to demonstrate competency.
One second, Matt.
Discussion questions on the amendments? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, and we'll continue on with discussions afterwards. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Any other kind of questions, comments?
I do have a few. So just to clarify, so IKF was just the standard from MASCE. IKFE, we as a district have created our version of this.
Correct. MASCE put out examples. Districts have been working together, as Mr. Jagir alluded to, since December.
No, thank you for the work. So just want folks to realize that this may be unique to Franklin, so folks are moving in, moving out, whatever district that they are going to or coming from may have something a little bit different than what we have here.
Further, correct.
Yep, cool. Thank you. The, and I guess, the question I had was around what Paul was saying in terms of the mastery. So can you give me an example of how a student could satisfactorily complete their coursework but then show mastery?
So, could be a number of instances. So part of showing mastery in a course, a student needs to attend class to show mastery in a course, so we have attendance practices in place, and then we have internal systems to help support a student in a pathway towards achieving mastery. This also, in successfully completing relevant coursework, what the Department of Education is putting upon districts, is saying to them, you get to determine locally what that completing of relevant classwork, coursework is. So as a local district, some might say, like, some districts do or do not give final exams. Some districts do or do not have final portfolios. So we have to determine internally within the school system, what is our relevant coursework, and then outline that, so that it would be not passing that relevant coursework to earn full credit.
Okay. Thank you. And then, you'd mentioned the appeals process. So what is the process for the appeals previously? Was that managed and held by, facilitated by somebody else, or was that within the district?
It was facilitated by the Department of Education.
Okay. So with this change, we would have to then facilitate this on our own?
Correct.
And I'm assuming that there's an added expense, an overhead to this as well?
Correct.
Do we know how much ballpark that would be?
I can't, no, I can't.
No, fair enough. I think just other things that we just need to be mindful of, that this will, could impact budgets and that we need to account for. So thank you.
And I think the way, I would just say to that, the way we're trying to write this policy is in alignment with the regulations, but also giving Franklin High School and Franklin Public Schools the ability to work within the current systems and structures that they have in place. So there are appeals process in place. There are grading policies in place. There are groups of course-alike partners that are working to identify, you know, course-alike expectations. So we're working internally to do a lot of this work, and I think the writing of the policy in this way gives the school a bit more guidance and direction, but again, you know, supported within kind of the systems that are in place and working.
Yep. And I agree. I think we will have to, I'm just, I just want to be cognizant of that, we're shifting the burden of the workload now to the districts, which, I mean, I, we, I mean, I'm not sure if we have an idea of what, how much, how much appeal volume was, and how much is that taken into account, but that's just, that's just more that we're asking our district to take on without the compensation elsewhere to account for that. So, yeah, just being mindful of that.
No questions from me. We discussed the last policies regarding the meeting, so I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Good. Thank you.
And, well, obviously, Dr. Rogers and everyone kind of involved with this and with all the other policies, you know, I feel like the first term, when I was on policy, that we were able to kind of really go and do a lot of, like, build stuff from the ground up, and just like bullying and discrimination kind of policies and from that procedures. These past two years, because of just kind of like legal pinballs and a lot of legislative changes, there's just been so much. We've kind of just been bounced around, but I really appreciate you continuing to kind of stepping up to the plate and kind of doing so much work to get us to where we are, even though, you know, this has, you know, certainly been situations outside of our control that we're just kind of more just been reactive to, but thank you very much. All right, so now, vote will come on the motion as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. I'll come for a first, a second read in the new term. All right, superintendent goals.
Okay, so just to keep the meeting moving, I am pleased to present my superintendent evaluation goals for you for the 25, 26 school year. You'll notice that the goals clearly outline a framework of what the expectations that I'm setting for myself with regard to the district. They align directly with the four strategic goals of the district and the school improvement plans that exist. The first goal is around strengthening school community and team collaboration, building coherent systems and structures, particularly as we think of our newly reorganized schools, and aligning instructional practices and enhancing communication. Those also, there's a crosswalk between the four goals that are in Franklin with the four standards that we have in education as educators, which are instructional leadership, management and operations, family community engagement, professional culture are all the four main goals in some shape or form, whether you're a superintendent or a counselor or an educator, they look that way. So if you look at the first goal, it was around community collaboration. So one of the emphasis points that I have is around the work that's happening within our schools. Our leadership teams are, in many cases, establishing new leadership structures and teams, whether it's a brand-new school or it's a school with a new leader who's been in the role for less than a year. There's new leadership structures and systems forming at each of our schools. So one of the ideas was aligning those priorities. The other piece we've done is we've changed our structures within our, in the systems we have at each school, where we used to have, not just, but a monthly meeting with a group of principals, and then a different monthly meeting for the group of APs at each level with principals. We've changed it to have it more of a focus, so we have instructional leadership meetings by complex. We've conducted our first round of learning walks, which were excellent. I mean, the level and caliber of teaching that's happening in our district, and to see folks that I've seen in so many different schools along the way under one roof has just been really amazing. I think we're really fortunate in Franklin. And what I would say with that is, is that ability allowed, over the course of four days, I personally was able to get into 21 classrooms in that one, that first round. So that example of changing some structures and systems to try to get in is really important, and I think the work this year, for me particularly, has to be directly tied. I can't have goals separate of what the goals for the district are. It just, they wouldn't be synergy and they wouldn't be alignment. So that's one piece. We're also getting ready to get feedback from our staff regarding the transitions, whether it's a schedule change with wind block at the high school, or it's a schedule change across the board for our pre-K through eight schools. I'm trying to factor that in. So those are pieces of information, so I think about process and trying to understand how we're collaborating, how our communities are functioning, the role that I play in that, I think are all important. If you move to the next goal, you'll see in some of the key actions and the outcomes, ultimately, it's around those systems. I talked a little bit. So for example, this year, I required our HR department, our operations, to submit goals similar to what schools have to do. So for example, I know that when Mr. Stolazzi presented for HR, he was looking at our recruitment, our hiring, and our onboarding process and ways to streamline that and create a better, more efficient system for how we track and do that work, so that we can make sure that we're optimizing the time and can capitalize on if we know we have a vacancy and filling that in the most efficient way. So that work, I'm directly tied to every, that's just one example, but directly tied to supporting that work on a weekly basis when we meet to look at those systems. Mr. Stolazzi recently surveyed, for example, our leadership team on the process of hiring and writing the referrals and getting those to his office, and what can be done to help with that. So that's just one example. The other example is around the work that Colin has presented around transportation, as we look to optimize that procedure and process, as well as some of our other facilities and some of the other areas where we know we want to improve those systems. So those are direct things that you will see throughout the year through updates, through the school committee on the progress we're making, but those are directly tied to the work that I'm directly overseeing and involved with. As I move into the third goal, it's around instructional practices. As you know, universal design for learning has been an ongoing, multi-phased, multi-staged approach as we move forward. You know, looking at our practices, particularly this year, it's around bringing all of our educators together in different setups. So whether it's a K-2 building, a three-to-five, a unified six-through-eight building, or at the high school nine-through-12, and looking at just the practices that we have across the board. And it was great to see during that instructional walk, so many, there's so many areas where we have so many strong practices that are aligned, despite working in different buildings for many years, to see how, just what, how off, how we're off to a really good start. And I think about the shared experiences where we want them to be shared for students are, but also there's the autonomy of teachers and the skills and expertise that they bring to the job. I'd also think about our counseling staff and the work they're doing across the board at each level. Some counselors are serving at multiple levels, and those conversations have been interesting as they've looped with kids or are seeing kids that they worked with in elementary and now they're seeing when they visit or work at the high school. So there's just some really interesting things happening within the district that are connecting people and ultimately creating, creating the environment for students that we want when they walk through those doors, including my own children who benefit from the staff that we have. The next thing I would mention is just around, I mentioned the ILT structure, but one outcome and evidence that you would see by the end of the year is just the outcome of these meetings. What have we learned from this? What have we taken away that helps inform some direction that we take moving forward? This is a year of kind of landing a plane, taking stock on what's working and what's not, being thoughtful about our next move and what we do, and trying to really be intentional about the work, but ultimately, this is the year where we need to be doing that particular work. So much planning went in to so many things that are happening, pre-K through age 22, that we want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to focus on that. The final piece was around just communication. Many of our schools, the principals have personally been writing their newsletters that they put out to staff weekly, some are doing bi-weekly to the community. We've seen monthly newsletters. The work that we do within the district, we're still working on the website to get that as functional as possible, to use that as a communication tool and mechanism, and we're going to continue to work through those pieces. The last thing I'd say is for transparency around that communication, is also around our budget, our hiring systems, all the things that we want to put out front-facing to students, to staff and families in the community, you'll continue to see as we move forward. to staff and families in the community, you'll continue to see as we move forward. So, with that said, really, we're, the district, I think the goals that you've already approved across all schools and the district, I really tried to make a concerted effort to align my goals to directly support that work because it felt like the most authentic way for me to put goals forward. So, I think when Mr. Charles brought up earlier around should the next committee, the next committee certainly could vote on these goals and I would be fine, and I think it's a good idea to share this again. But ultimately, I really tried to align this work to the work that's actually happening in schools. And I thought it was, like I said, a more authentic way to approach this particular season as we have a lot of things happening and a lot of changes taking place. I want to be as mindful as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Lucas, I don't have many, many questions I want to comment here, like, you know, I see your work with my own eyes, how do you handle, how do you communicate with the students, with the teachers? So, I definitely appreciate it, whatever it would happen, the goals are fantastic now. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I support this fully. I know how you love systems and we're doing it, you know? You see it. I see it with the budget and the system we're putting in place, and it's just, it's cool because I've seen you talk about this, and now it's like, it's here. And so, it's exciting stuff, and you're, you're doing it. It's very actionable, so, no questions.
No, no questions on my part, but I just want to say thank you for putting these together, presenting, presenting these goals, and just all the thoughtfulness that you've had. It's, you haven't had a normal year since we hired you as superintendent, and...
When do those come? Do we have enough?
I couldn't tell you, and you will continue to not have a normal year.
Fair enough, thank you.
In the coming one. But, I guess, you know, as my, my capacity as superintendent eval chair for one last time, just want to, you know, remind of this committee and the future committee that, you know, this is one of the three main responsibilities of the school committee is to evaluate and give feedback to the superintendent. And Lucas, you've done a great job, which was certainly reflected in our, the evaluation this committee gave you this, this past summer, and, you know, taking that seriously to make sure you continue to, well, that this body continues to support you. I'm doing, doing a great job going forward, and, yeah, thank you for putting these together. And I'm sure someone else looks forward to evaluating in the future.
I have plenty to do, to grow, so, and I know that, so, thank you.
Cool, thank you. So, I appreciate the approach, aligning it to the goals, I think makes, makes perfect sense so that it's consistent and it's in the same themes. One thing that I would, would have liked to see is more quantitative goals so that we could see, okay, like specifically, what are we, what are we looking for? Like, for example, communications, like, what is the frequency that we're sending out messaging? Like, what's, what's, what are we targeting to get to? I know that there's been a lot that's been going on now, and with redistricting happening, we're definitely busy with this, but that's something that is to keep mindful of, is how do we add some, some numbers to this so that we can strive to and see what's that target versus more being qualitative? Other than that, what I would like to see, at least going forward, I know some of these, these are things that we, we have to do, like the budget, we have to do. Looking, I know we're, we, like, how do we, what are the goals that we can do that will set Franklin apart from other communities that are, are, are really going to transform us and transform the education for our students? So, I think that's something just to think of for down the road, of like, how do we, how do we take it up another notch, you know? I know, we've asked a lot of you, and as David said, you've not had a, a normal, run-of-the-mill year, but I think, I think that's our normal, I guess, and how do we just do transformational work?
I understand.
Yeah, that's it.
I think I would say to that, too, the, the work we've done to, we've created a lot of change within the district. And I think that, that is transformational. I don't know if it's the same way you mean it, but I think it has been. You know, I'm also cognizant of the amount of initiatives we push down on folks and, and our educators, our leaders, and I'm just, I'm mindful of that balance, and I think we have to just be careful on how much we commit to and what we do in, particularly in this particular juncture in time. So, I say that respectfully to, I'm accepting your feedback. I'm not trying to fight you on every comment, but I do think there's a, there's a recognition that a lot's been asked of a lot of people, and I want to make sure that we're, we've bitten off a lot right now. And I think as we land, I think there, there are always opportunities for us to continue to improve, me first, as an individual and as a professional, but certainly understand the point around. We, we're not a stagnant district, we never have been, and I think we don't want to, I don't think we'll become that. And I think as we settle, I would also make a point, you know, although pre-K through eight has been through this huge amount of change, the high school has been in the same building, but I think they have continued to progress and, and create initiatives, and you heard about those, the wind block, for example, this year. I know they're doing some grading review. So, I do think in spite of all the change we've experienced within the district, where there are opportunities, we continue to seek to grow and create and enhance the student experience. And I think I see my job as helping to support that work across each school, each level.
So, first, I want to comment on the, the thought of kind of pushing this out for, you know, another, another meeting once the new schools committee is, is seated. You know, I think, actually, Dave made a very good point. You know, the, the point of this committee is to evaluate, you know, the superintendent and what they do, have the pleasure of having, you know, been part of that opportunity. And I think that's really the point to focus on in looking at the next schools, school committee. These goals are very diverse, they're very broad, they're well, they're well-defined in most aspects, and they provide the next school committee with a lot of opportunities to evaluate you. And they have that opportunity, I think, at the end of the year, and I think really setting you on the path and having goals now so you can start really targeting them is helpful without taking away from that responsibility of the next school committee. In that vein, and actually building off of what Al said, finding some ways to really kind of enumerate or tell some stories and some of the, the outcomes and evidence that you're looking to provide, I think are going to be really important. Specifically, looking at goals one and four, you rely on surveys, being able to say more than just, alright, people said this, this is great. If we're looking at growth and improvement, being able to kind of reference back or either show the progression throughout the year to really tell that story, or from last year to this year, just kind of having that ready where instead of just saying, here's my survey, you know, they were positive, I'd love to see that kind of, that progression or, or, you know, at least a consistency. And then for goal four, the terminology uses increasing engagement. Again, to Al's point, enumerating that, actually having something saying, you know, this is, this is the meaningful increase that we had, because I think it will allow us to evaluate very efficiently. And it's just kind of a very simple, look, there it is, have, you know, this was the engagement before, we talked about increasing it, this is the, you know, this is kind of the outcome that we've achieved. And I think it'll just make evaluation, it's never easy, it's a long process, no matter what, but it will make it more straightforward, especially for that next committee.
Thank you.
I disagree with the communication stats because the number of communications does not always correlate with good communication. The more messages that you push out, sometimes the less people hear you. So, I would focus on more the quality of the, of the messaging and the diversity of the messaging versus the number of messages going out because you end up spinning your wheels trying to hit that number but not truly engaging your community with your messaging. So, just something to shoot on, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, one, just in terms of the conversation about like bringing this, like having this as like a review for the next meeting, I think it's fantastic, especially if we kind of also combine it with the evaluation process. Because, I mean, I still distinctly remember Elise Stokes being like, pay attention the whole year, don't wait till the last minute to, you know, put together all the documentation. And yet, Memorial Day weekend, I was up every single night until midnight looking through so much stuff to try to get it done. I should have listened to Elise. But, so, I think it'd be wonderful to kind of kickstart that new term, talking about this, but also kind of framing it to say for all those, you know, folks kind of new to this process, here is what we do and here's why it is so important that we evaluate and what that actually, you know, kind of means, so. And also, I also really appreciate, as my colleagues have mentioned, just kind of like the alignment around this, just in the same fashion, really, as we kind of were talking about, like, the, the budget and like a zero-based budget approach that, you know, went, designed that, and then now that we're living through that, really looking to fine-tune a lot of those systems. So, I appreciate the way that you kind of came up with this as well, so, thank you very much.
I just want to add one thing, that, to the, to the number of communications. I finally signed my middle schooler up for that Booster-Thon in the middle school, so I don't know how many text messages we got until I went, fine, great, I'll do it right now, like, you know, but, um...
If I could use that, I would have met the quota, because there was a lot of communication on the Booster-Thon.
There was a lot on that one, yeah. It took me like six times to go, I'm on the school committee, I should be doing this, I should be the first one doing it, so. Anyway, kudos, because he's tenacious, you know? Little tidbits of success.
So, I recommend approval of the superintendent's goals as discussed.
Alright, is there a motion? Move to approve the superintendent evaluation goals as discussed. Second? Alright, discussion questions? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, motion passes, thank you very much. Discussion-only items, October 1 report.
Okay, so, in your packet, you can see the October 1st, 2025 enrollment report. Enrollment is, we do this monthly, but October 1st is a key date within the system because that's the date we use for enrollment, that's what funding is tied to when it comes to the state. So, in there, in my overview, I state that Franklin currently has 4,384 students. This represents a reduction from previous years, but also mirrors some of the regional and statewide demographic trends where we're seeing that are tied to lower birth rate throughout the region. So, this year, as I've already mentioned a few times tonight, marks the first year of our district pre-K through eight reorg that has occurred, and it's resulted in what you know to be the two complexes for our K-2, three-to-fives and our unified six-through-eight middle school and our nine-through-12 high school. So, these shifts just point to the balance. So, if I was to break down, elementary enrollment is 1,880. It's a modest decline of just 12 students from the, from the projection, but ultimately, I'm sorry, it was a, it's 12 students higher than the projection that we had, but it had a modest decline. And if you look at the Lincoln K-5, there's 1,060 students enrolled, and you can see at the Washington Street, there's 820 students enrolled in that particular school. So, those two buildings house our, our K through five students, K-2 and three-to-five. At middle school, there's 1,008 students, and that's a decline from 75 from last year, and it's slightly below the projection. And this modest reduction reflects the cohort, some of the right sizing that has happened in some of our, our groups. The consolidation of the three, the six-through-eight middle school does provide an opportunity to align academically and provides opportunities within that framework that we're still realizing and working through, but ultimately, those students came together. At the high school, we have 1,388 students, down from 1,430. So, there is a bit of a trend downward. We didn't anticipate some of the trend to drop as it did, but ultimately, the pattern is also something that we're seeing across other high schools within Massachusetts as well. I provided some charts for you and some data as you look through your packet. Before I do that, with our pre-K, currently it's 116. That is a rolling admission, so it's important to note, as students become eligible, grade eligible, yeah, I'm sorry, year of age eligible, that number will change. It's 116. At the end of the year, last year, it was 154. So, you can see where, over time, students are, will continue to enroll depending on, and with the expansion of two sites, because we expanded, we've been able to house and appropriately have the space we need for those students. We're going to continue to monitor that. That is something Mrs. Morano and I met with Mrs. Taylor, the principal, just to look at the enrollment and look at where we started and how can we continue to look to, look for our partner students and look to increase enrollment for paid tuition for ACDC? But ultimately, that, that accounts for some of the enrollment shifts that you'd see at that level. Finally, if you look at our demographic information, it shows here our free and reduced numbers, it's, it shows a decrease from 22% to 15. And I know that, just based on that, one might say, oh, we have, maybe have more stability within our families, financial stability. One other piece of information is not every, every family is filling out free and reduced information, particularly as we've allowed lunch to be served to students at no charge. So, we continue to put out that information, but I do think there's a correlation between that as well. We just are having a hard time knowing who's not applying. It's hard, that, that's a hard metric to quantify, like, who's not submitting without looking at if it's a family, if it's a circumstance change from a salary or is it directly related? So, we're continuing to dive into that a little bit deeper. The special education, 20% to 21% is within a 1% change. 504s is at 7% across the district, and our EL population has increased by 1% as we continue to, to educate students, multilingual learners. And you'll see in our ethnicity and race slides, you'll see the percentages. We have a 1% increase in our African-American, Asian and Hispanic-Latino, and a 3% increase in multiracial students across the board at each of, that's across the district. So, as we look, one of the things that I wanted to mention for the next piece is about children attending other schools. There's a lot of information out there on where are students going, if enrollment's declining, is it because of move-ins and things, or move-outs and things like that? If we look from 2023 to 2024, if you look at the charter school numbers, 207, it was 200, from 207 to 200, so that's a seven-student decline. Vocational school Tri-County, we saw an increase of 10 students. We do anticipate, when the new Tri-County building is built, we can anticipate typically when you build a new school, you see an increase in enrollment, if the schools can, can fit the students and receive them, but also the opportunities when there's a new school. Typically, you'll see a spike just historically in, in districts where they have a vocational school that was either built new or renovated. So, that's something we would pay attention to next year. As we move forward, the private school, parochial school, stable, pretty stable, just an increase of two students to in-state private parochials from last year. So, these are, obviously, these are based on the 2024 to 25, that's how the enrollment works. But ultimately, in those charts and graphs, we did our best to try to break this down. This information will also be put out publicly after this meeting for people to dive in and look at some of these charts, but I wanted to just frame it for all of you and then open it up to any questions that you have. This isn't a voting action that you take, but it's informative and it's open for discussion and questions and feedback, but ultimately, I will open it up now to any questions that you may have.
We'll start down here.
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Just to call out, and I know we've talked about declining enrollment for many, many years. I think it's every single, all four years of my two terms, I don't think this is going to change. I do want folks to realize, though, that this is not unique to Franklin, this is not unique to Massachusetts, it's not unique to the United States. I actually listened to some of it around that, there's declining birth rates across the world at this point. So, I think it looks like it comes down to how do we educate our students? But on the flip side, the cost to educate a student is not declining, it's also going up. So, just because we are seeing a declining enrollment doesn't mean we're going to see a reduction in our budget or the, the amount that the school districts needs. It's, it's actually rising faster than the declining that's happening. So, just to call that out, just if folks, because I know that, that's a very big talking point. One thing, though, just to, to be at least heartfelt about is that we are seeing that students aren't leaving the Franklin public education, our public school systems, in droves. The numbers, while we see some losses, it doesn't seem like it's, it's a, people are saying Franklin Public Schools is not where they want to be. We are keeping our students, and there are some that may choose to go elsewhere, but the educators that we have here, back there, are doing a great job in ensuring that our students get a quality education and our children are being set up for success, to be successful once they leave our district. So, I am happy with what... So I am happy with what you all are doing, despite seeing the enrollment declining, which is outside of anything that we can do. So, just, just an aside, thank you.
No questions from me, thank you.
I just have one question about the, the high school. Because just from, from the election going on, and the declining enrollment narrative that's always out there, when we talk about the high school number of students being down, what I've heard from educators is, they, we were bursting at the seams, now it's getting manageable. Is that accurate?
When, when I was assistant principal there, we had 1,850 students, I think, at that time.
Right.
And it was a pretty packed building.
Right.
I would say, that was the, I'm sorry, 1750.
17.
Was it 1750? I was trying to embellish a little bit, so it's fine, you caught me, you caught me. No, 1750, and it was, it was a pretty full house.
Yeah.
Obviously, it continues to be, we're not, those halls are not empty, that is a full school.
Right, that's kind of like what I want to get to.
And I think, when we think about the school, I remember when it was designed, I remember conversations around teachers needing to share rooms.
Yeah.
And it was built at a percentage less than what the capacity, what we had in our, for our total enrollment. So we knew that the, the rotation would be in there. So that's one piece, I would say. The other thing is, is the decline's not from move-outs, it's from freshman classes coming in that are smaller.
Yeah.
So we have these, we have these cohorts of students traveling through, that previously were in elementary, when we saw our elementary decline. Now the elementary will start to stabilize. Middle school's seeing the decline move through, they'll start to stabilize. And then the high school, when those smaller cohorts pass through, you'll see us start to stabilize through 2030, 2032. The final graph in your chart is the McKibben projection.
Yeah.
So I, I put that in there just as a reference tool for folks that are interested in charts and graphs, and want to see what projections look like. And just to be clear, the 207 I mentioned for charter, it, it was 207 for the elementary, and it went to 200. And then at middle, it was 117 to 115. So that's the difference, it's a small, small amount. So that's sometimes we hear, it's either the charter or whatnot, but that would just be a point I would, I would emphasize.
Right.
There's a lot of discussion around enrollment, in general. We, we've been really critical of, not critical, we've been really diligent about checking enrollment, looking at forecasts, so that we can kind of look ahead. But ultimately, the information's there for you to review as we move forward, it's a report that's posted, we refer to it. By the end of the year, I'm always interested to look at the June numbers, because I feel like they always change. So when we build our budgets and we get approval in January, by June, some things have changed, and then we do our best to try to make adjustments, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, referring to the comments, what Franklin High Schools are not, as what Al was mentioning about Franklin High Schools or other schools are not, up to the state level. I heard about that on Facebook as well. Whoever said that, it's a shame on them, you know, it's a being in the horseman in the stomach of Franklin, you shouldn't say that. If you compare the curriculum with the rest of the school, like Lexington, like Lexington, Hopkinton, one of the top in, you know, Massachusetts. If you compare with them, ours is most compatible with them, it's not, our curriculum is one of the best in Massachusetts, you know, I'm just referring to those comments. And regarding the downsizing, or the numbers are going down, there are very various reasons, you know, one of the reasons is, senior population has been increasing frankly, if you compare with other towns like Hopkinton, it's the next town, you know. Our senior population is more than what is normally compared to the state statistics.
Single-family homes are, if you look at the statistic around folks that are retirement-eligible, who still live in a multi-bedroom, single-family home, because for, for host of reasons, I think, that's, that's, that's a reality that we're seeing in Franklin too, where people are staying in their homes longer and not downsizing, because the alternative to the house that they have, that they maybe have paid for over, you know, decades, is the best option for them at that time, rather than buying something new that's smaller, it's sustained. So that's, that's another piece, but I think we've, we've seen, I think we're going to start to see stability, more stability in Franklin, based on what we're seeing as a trend at the elementary level, and then as it moves through middle and high. It'll just take years to get there.
Yeah, I've been in Franklin for the past 18 years, I see the totally graph, you know, the low to high, high to low, you know, coming down like last year, because of the failure of override. So I've done that, you know, Franklin is the best town among the, most education state in the nation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Concur to those statements as well. And so I just, two, one question, one note, just with the, the free and reduced lunch. And we spoke about like the, the decrease, and sometimes it is just folks not applying. And with Franklin Middle School at 1%, just to confirm, that number was confirmed? That's, that's the accurate number?
Good catch. Yeah, so that, that was a stat that we have, and we pull our data. We're dig, we're still continuing to dig into that. This is a report that we always provide in October, so I wanted to make sure we did it within this month, but we're continuing to look at that. And that would just be from what we have on record for families. It's not to state, like I said earlier.
Right.
Who's accessing free and reduced services. So, you know, transportation at the elementary level, when you think of middle, I just, we're not seeing people who are completing. So there's some work to dig into that a little bit deeper, and I'm going to be, I will be meeting with Colin on that, I think it relates directly, not just to food service, but that's typically the, the entry point, either through transportation or through food service. And then when athletics come into play in high school, we see that often utilized and leveraged. So we need to look at the middle, middle level closer.
And then, and thanks for, for mentioning that too, because just for folks at home, either who are kind of in, in some of these situations, or their neighbors, friends are. So I know it's listed as free and reduced meals, but by filling out that application, what other benefits are families going to be eligible for?
Chromebook insurance, transportation, athletics. ACDC tuition, and... Student activities, yes.
Thanks. So again, so really, even if, you know, I know right now the state has been, you know, wonderful in kind of providing those breakfast and lunch for, for our kiddos. But again, if you know anybody that, that is in need right now, even though, you know, it's not, they don't necessarily need a free meal right now, the application opens just so many doors. So please kind of encourage everybody to kind of go on our website, reach out, and look into those applications. And with that, too, especially with that, we saw the drop-off, do we or can we work with the Franklin Food Pantry to look into, you know, I know they have a, a list of, of clients, and I'm sure there's some legality and some privacy concerns. Are there ways in which we can kind of try to figure out if there's, you know, some folks have kind of fallen off our list, but might still be on theirs?
We, we can't trade information.
Yeah.
With them, but ultimately, I think what we can do is put it out to our community, and to our families, to try to collect that information. But we couldn't share that, that information with them, and they probably can't with us either, as a 501(c)(3).
Thanks. And then one other note, it's just mentioned with the projections, and in terms of like the enrollment. And so I love that you kind of open up, and for folks when they're looking at this later on, they can kind of see, you know, where that McKibben projections, you know, how, how they stood. You know, as he kind of went into this in, I think it was like February of 2024, and kind of where they are now, October 1, you could see this, you know, he's pretty much right on target. And the big, what's so beneficial to that is because of that very last chart that we have, and you take a look at the McKibben study itself, but the whole time when he was kind of projecting out what our enrollment trends were looking like, it was often, kind of talked about like a hockey stick approach, where we've seen that decline, and we've kind of lived through that, and then it really starts to kind of bottom out before later, you know, five, 10 years down the road, you might start to see a slight uptick. And so to be able to kind of go and look at the numbers that he was forecasting out, kind of say, "All right, now here's how they actually measure up," to provide a little bit of that, you know, confidence to the, the data, and then look at the trends. It's all my colleagues that kind of mentioned that old adage of, "Well, you know, all the, the enrollment trends are just going down, enrollment's going down, enrollment's going down." It's just not accurate. It's, I think somebody had mentioned it's a talking point, and that's all, it's just a, it's a talking point, it's just something to say, but there's no meaning behind it. The enrollment numbers really are at a different situation than they were, you know, five, 10 years ago. But unfortunately, as Al Charles has mentioned, the cost of doing business and of educating our kiddos, just because of either inflationary costs, or also as we kind of go back to the policy, and about the appeal process, and so much stuff that's shifted, the burden shifts from the state, from the feds, down to the local level, just continues to increase the cost of doing business in, in schools. And so I, hopefully, any folks that had those old talking points, really kind of stop, take a look at the data, and see that it's just not there anymore, and we can kind of move on to what, what we're actually kind of dealing with. So, thank you very much, and thanks for, for this information, I always appreciate it. All right, and Accept Quarterly Report.
Hey, this is just information for you, every quarter, Accept provides their quarterly report on their financials, we are a member. You've voted me as the representing district representative on their board of directors, and ultimately, this is just information for you all. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, or take the questions back to the director at Accept for them to answer in more detail.
All right, any questions?
No questions.
No? All right, that was easy one. All right, Information Matters, School Committee Subcommittee Reports, Policy.
Policy, this is what we were working on, so it's not much going on except for this.
Anything going on with Budget?
Budget, this evening, or before the school committee meeting, we did a FY27 budget preview and timeline, and started talking about the projections, and Jana will be sharing with us the next steps that they'll be undertaking.
Community Relations.
Community Relations, so the last newsletter of this committee will be going out on Thursday. Reminder for folks, vote on November 11th, oh not 11th, sorry, sorry, November 4th.
It's like a psyop.
Yeah, I'm already like, yeah, November 4th, yeah, but, yeah.
All right, appreciate it. What about SWAC?
SWAC first meeting held on October 21st, and we discussed about what our accomplishments of last year, and we said votes will be coming up, our next meeting will be December 16th.
All right, and Mental Health and Well-being.
We haven't met less since the last meeting.
Okay, all right.
Superintendent DeGea, do we have an update on the, the PCC, JPPC meetings?
Oh, we put out a survey to the JPCC members, we've coordinated with them to discern, to get information on whether they will be virtual or in-person and whatnot. I have that information, I know that Colin and Denise Miller were working on getting a communication out to them. There was an initial kind of gathering day, I know that there were some pressing issues around some of the kind of edges of kind of what can they do within the scope of work? So we were going to plan that. What I can do is send out that information to the whole school committee, to give you guys a sense of what's going on, but I know that dates have been set for one meeting, to get an introductory, but beyond that, no other further dates have been set, so I can send out the information I have. And I knew, moving on to the new term, whoever, as you move forward with that, with your subcommittees, whether it's Budget, Superintendent Eval, all the ones that you're mentioning today, just getting a sense of who would be a part of those, but ultimately, I can share information with the entire committee.
Just one suggestion, just thinking of the, the 1% at the middle school level from free and reduced, can that be a talking point at the meeting?
Yes.
See what they can do to communicate, if you all can create some, you know, documentation that they can use to, to pass in their, their channels, I think that would help drive some awareness.
We could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Consent Agenda.
I recommend approval of the minutes from your October 14, 2025 School Committee Meeting as detailed. I recommend acceptance of $2,000 from Gridiron Club for the supplemental supplies as detailed. I recommend acceptance of $2,457 from the Theater Boosters for in-house enrichment as detailed.
All right, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as detailed?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as detailed.
Second?
Second.
Given that one error. Discussion questions? Seeing none, vote will come on a motion, all those in favor, if you find by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, Citizens Comments, are there any citizens in the audience, in person or online, who would like to comment on an item that falls within the committee's purview?
Hello, Reese Hansen, 2 Jenny Avenue, good to see you all again. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank Mr. McNeil for his service to the committee, and an opportunity to take, to thank Mrs. Gallagher for her service to the committee as well. I wanted to add in, I had an opportunity to bring my child to the Franklin Children's Museum recently, which was awesome. If you've got an elementary-aged kid, please take the time to go by, it's great. We spent way longer there than I thought we were even going to, and he had a blast. And if you've got a kid who's maybe older than the activities, bring him by anyway, because you can show your kid what can happen when someone works really hard to make something a reality. It's nothing short of inspiring, and congratulations again on that, and thank you for doing that for our community. I also want to take an opportunity to please encourage everybody to vote next week, one week from today, we can do something very important to support our schools, and elect a new committee that will be strong. I am particularly biased in favor of one candidate myself, but that is beside the point. And similarly, a really strong council, a council that consists of candidates that are paying close attention, that demonstrate that they understand what is going on in our town, and are bringing good ideas, that will strengthen not only our schools, but our town as a whole. And if you are at a loss of who those people might be, reach out. Thank you very much for your time.
St. Cheryl, Act 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director, Franklin Matters. Thank you both for your service as well, you'll be missed. Public Service Announcement, with no endorsements in that. 20% of the registered voters don't care. Seriously, 20%. Excuse me, the other way around. 80% of the registered voters don't care, because only 20% actually vote. 80%. 80, yes, 80% of the registered voters don't care. They don't, they're, they're not following anything, and even the atrocious conversations that are in that fishbowl on the social media, they're not even paying attention to that. A very sad statistic, but the numbers show that even during a presidential election year, with major amounts of nauseating advertising that disturb us all, only 20% of the voters don't vote. 80% do. Maybe it's the advertising dollars, hold that aside. The state election doesn't do much better, with 40% of the voters not bothering to vote. Even when it comes to specific dollar votes, like the two in each of the last two years, 55% of the voters don't bother to vote. Something's wrong. Voting is easier now than ever before. You can vote by mail, absentee ballot, in-person, early voting. The percent is just simply shifting, it's not increasing the number of people who vote. People are just voting in different ways, it's not increasing the number. As sad as all that is, all of us can do something about it. Talk to your Franklin neighbors, talk to your Franklin friends, find out if they are voting, and if they are, thank them, remind them, information on all the candidates, almost, is available. If they are not voting, encourage them to do so. It's their local opportunity. It's a civic duty, an honorable right, to vote and help determine who governs this town. Our town and school services, as mentioned, are directly dependent upon who sits in those chairs, on the school committee, and on the town. chairs, on the school committee and in the town council, and respectfully, on the other boards who have stepped up and are going to be on the elected ballots as well. If those 80% don't vote, or won't vote, I would have to assume that for them, seriously, Franklin doesn't matter.
Thank you. All right, then, new business.
Okay, so next meeting will be after the election, that Steve mentioned, and we will do an organizational meeting. That's typically a meeting where I kick off the meeting with the gavel, and then we go through our procedure to go through voting for chair. I hand off to said chair, and then we conduct the meeting. I will be providing some information, some updates. I, I will preview some information that will be important. We reference tonight the goals and just some orientational information that kind of orient the committee to the work. And then also, you will want to think as a committee of the new, the new body, who would want to serve on some of the subcommittees that we offer, so I'll provide some information about that, too, like what they do, what's the purpose, how often. This is also a year where we're negotiating with four of our five unions. As you know, we did teacher negotiations last year. I see Donna in the crowd. We've been in communication around setting up negotiation meetings with our other units, and we were waiting for the new elected bodies so that we could have representatives for each of those particular negotiations. So that's something that I'll, I'll lay out all of the information and where we need information from the newly-elected bodies so we can continue to do our work, but those are all on the agenda for next meeting. That's on November 18th.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Finally, we will be adjourning to executive session and will not be returning to open meeting, as per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body and the chair so declares, is there a motion?
Move to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
All right. And it is a heavy heart. I ask all those in, in favor, adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.